I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee here on Tuesday, April 23rd in the Middle High School Library. If you could please stand to salute the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we get sidetracked, does anybody like to address the committee? At this time, I just asked you to go to the podium. Okay. Seeing nobody, we're going to move on to the reading and approval of the records. The first sediments is from our March meeting and the second set is from our abbreviated meeting, whatever you want to call it, before town meeting where we just met to discuss, to finalize our budget. So there'll be two sets of motions to approve. So whenever you get a chance, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of March 26, 2024 first.
I'll make a motion for March 26.
A second?
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the other one would just be for the April 1st, which I think is one page on the back. And I'll make a motion to approve that.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so up first, we have, as part of Dr. Boss's grand grouping, we have Ms. Christina Park, the Director of Guidance, to give us a guidance department update.
Hi, everyone. Christina Park, Director of Guidance at the high school. Thank you for having me. Okay, just a refresher, there are three guidance counselors at the high school. We each have close to 200 students on our caseload and we do counseling on social, emotional, academic, course selection, post-secondary planning, and new student registrations. Every grade level has a guidance curriculum, so for grade nine, we focus on orientation to high school, graduation requirements, GPA, academic eligibility, attendance, and the importance of getting involved in clubs and activities. Grade 10, we just met with our grade 10 students a couple of weeks ago and we introduced them to the program called Naviance. It's a college and career platform. And we did a career interest inventory where the students answered questions based on their interests and then they linked those interests to potential careers and then they were then able to match careers to majors they would study at college and then they were able to find a college that had that major. So it was really great discussion with our sophomores. Grade 11, we start on post-secondary planning. We give them a blue folder, a bunch of information on different types of post-secondary planning options for them, including military, trade, job, and college. And then we show them more features on Naviance, which I'm going to demonstrate in a minute. And then grade 12 is a continuation of that. We create the Common App account with seniors. We do the application process with them and we continue to use our Naviance platform. For our demonstration, I'm going to show you Naviance. Is it not showing? Oh, no, it's showing on mine.
Walk amongst yourselves.
Thank you. Alright, so in case you are interested, your student's email will be their school email and their password is typically their portal password unless they decided to change it. So you can always hack into your student's account if you want to see what they're doing on Naviance. Don't tell them I said that. Alright, so there are a couple of different tabs up here that we typically navigate. As I mentioned, the self-discovery tab, this career interest profiler. This is what we did with our sophomores a couple of weeks ago. Again, answered a couple of questions based on their interests. It gives them a summary based on their personality type. Explains their personality type in depth. They can click on the careers related to their personality type. They can sort it by education level. They can click on a particular career. I'll just click on this one, clinical and psychology. And again, it tells you the level of education that they need, what actually a psychologist does, the wages across America, so you can see what they make in Massachusetts or anywhere across the world, related majors, and then you can click on one of these majors and it will bring you a list of colleges that have those majors. So it's a really cool tool that our students can use and connect their college and career studies together. So this is what we did with sophomores. What I wanted to focus more on is our junior curriculum. So we do a lot of things with juniors. Under this Colleges tab, we do a college search tool. So if a student doesn't know where to start in the college search process, we recommend that they start off with a college search. So they would answer criteria based on what they are interested in having in their college. And I always caution students, don't answer every single thing on this survey just because there's not going to be a college that has 100% of your wishes, but just do some things that are really meaningful to you. So we can do a search together if you'd like. I'm just going to clear my history because I just did one the other day. Start over. Okay, so typically the things I like to focus on are location, academics, if the student knows a major of study. Some students are interested in student life and diversity. There's an athletic tab for our student athletes, so if they want to play Division I or Division II, Division III sports or club, they can search criteria for that. But I'm just going to do a really quick search and I could ask for feedback as to where you would want to go to college. So anybody want to give me, anywhere in the country they want to study?
South.
South?
Where I didn't go.
Okay. Any other states that you would be interested in? You want to just keep it south? Keep the warm weather? We'll do that. You can also choose if it's a, do you want to be in a large city, suburb, rural? Not going to do that right now. In terms of academics, we can search for a bachelor's degree. Oh, it's a lot easier to look on here. And then a specific major?
Oceanography.
What is it?
Oceanography.
Oceanography? Oh, boy, okay. It's not typing. Heidi is not liking your suggestion. It's not money type, so.
Jake, you got one you want to help with?
It's a huge problem. Say.
Animal training looks really fun.
Animal training. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of schools that have that.
I'm just making this harder for you.
So we'll go to admissions. I usually don't like to choose acceptance rates or admissions at this point. I like to keep the search open, especially for juniors. It does have the student's GPA in there. So this fake student has a 2.9 GPA and a thousand SAT score. Student life, so if you're interested in specific clubs like drama or Greek life, you can choose a sorority, fraternity, ROTC, et cetera. Student diversity has information on LGBTQ, black institutional colleges, certain genders. So you could choose that if those are interests to you. This is whether you want like a very big school, small school, medium-sized school, so students can figure out what they want. Usually, I feel like at the beginning of junior year, before they go on tours, they have no idea what size school they want to go to or where they want to go to in terms of area. And then after they start to get on some campuses, they'll be able to kind of fill out this survey more. But it's just an option if they, they feel like, you know, they really like the small size because they're used to it at Abington, they could select schools that are of their size. And then again, cost, I don't like to touch at this point either because students don't know what their financial aid is going to be or scholarship opportunities are. So I like to keep all doors open at this point and then we can kind of look closer as the year goes on and into senior year, what that would look like. Athletics, do we want to play a sport?
Cross.
Cross? Okay.
Oh, it types for you.
It types there, I know. Varsity level?
Whatever you think. Sure.
NCAA? Sure. Division?
Jake, where are we going?
Go for it, go for it. Let's see if there's any animal studies that have cross.
With some methods of college.
Okay. So that will be my criteria.
Zero.
And there's no schools that have 100% matches. I'm assuming it's because of the animal studies and their own cross. But you can see there's student, schools that have 63% and you can see like what they're missing and what they're not. So location, oh, they do have the major, but they don't have a cross. So again, if that was a school that you wanted to consider further, you can click on this heart right there, add it to your colleges I'm thinking about list, which I'm going to show you in a second. But that's the gist of the college search. Any questions on the college search?
That's awesome.
Cool, I like that, you like that. We love doing this with our kids. Alright, so as I was mentioning how we hearted that school, this is the colleges I'm thinking about list. So this is like an electronic notebook for students to keep track of their schools that they're applying to or thinking about. So as you can see, we just added Florida Institute of Technology. So these are the schools that this hypothetical student is thinking about. This column right there, that just tells us if there's a CA in the computer screen, it's a Common App school. The Common App is an application that there are over 700 schools are affiliated with that students can just fill out one application and send it to all the schools that are Common App schools, making their lives easier. And we create Common App accounts with students at the beginning of their senior year. What's also great about this is that it tells us when the deadlines are. So students can know well in advance in their junior year if they have, want to do early action. They are going to be looking at the fall date and it is November 15th. If they want to do regular decision, it's February 15th. So they have all of that information right there as well. To add a school to this list, we can just click Add a School. I like to do keyword. Anyone want to name a school they want to add?
LaSalle.
LaSalle, because you work there, right?
I do.
Is it S-S-E-L-L? One S?
One S.
Okay. And it's easy as that, just to add the, the school to the list. The last thing I want to show you on Naviance is this really cool feature called the scattergram plot. So if I'm looking at Bridgewater State, I can go over to these three dots and look at the scattergrams. This is a graph of all students from Abington High School over the past 10 years who have applied to Bridgewater State College. The horizontal line is the average GPA of acceptance and the vertical line is the average SAT. The plots on this graph, so the green checkmarks, are all students from Abington High School who have applied and were accepted. The red Xs were students who were denied and the purple circles are students who are waitlisted. Your student is represented as this blue circle right here. So it's based on after your SATs are inputted into this program, then you will be shown on the graph. If your SATs are not in the program, you will not be a plot on this graph, but you can tell where you would fall based on where your GPA is at. So this feature really gives students a really good sense of whether they are a good fit for that school. So as you can see, this student is surrounded by a lot of green checkmarks, meaning students with a similar profile of them were accepted, meaning they would probably have a really good shot at getting in. So it gives students a visual of, you know, safety targets and reach goals, which we want them to have a well-balanced list. Questions on the scattergram?
What years, like is this just current year?
No, this is, um, this is a lot of years of data, at least 10.
And it's only students who utilize Naviance?
All of our students utilize Naviance. So we need to, every student that applies to college goes through the Naviance program. So it's every Abington student who has applied. Other questions? There's also, like many other great features on Naviance. If only I had more time, I would tell you. In the interest of time. So guidance events, we hold these events every year with a few new ones as indicated by the asterisk next to it. So we always have a college fair field trip in the fall. That's usually in September. We hold the financial aid night in the fall. PSAT workshops, we hold on a Saturday and then we do the results workshop in December, once those results are available. We are the AP coordinators of the school, so we coordinate the AP exams. We do on-the-spot admissions day. We've had Massa Soya come in this year, met with about 20 students who did interviews and all those 20 students got their acceptance and it was a really fun, exciting day in the guidance office for those students. We host a junior parent night. It's not just for junior parents. It's open to anyone that is interested in the college planning process. We do course selection per grade level. We just wrapped up with our eighth graders two weeks ago. So we're done with course selection for next year and we're in the process of building the schedule based on those course requests. We work closely with the wellness department and the school psychologists to do the signs of suicide program with our freshmen. We have a senior college decision day in May. That is pushed back a little bit because of decision days across the world have been affected due to the FASFA delay. So that will be later on in May and not May first, as typically we used to have. We do the scholarship awards night. We have college application help during bridge block. We bumped that up to two times per week this year and it was really helpful. The students really utilized going to the seminar room and just working on their applications with the guidance counselors available to ask any questions while they're working on it. We have colleges come in to do information sessions every year, trade schools, military branches. We showcase local part-time jobs. New this year, which is really exciting, in a couple days, April 30th, I think, is the first session, we're going to have a college essay workshop conducted by a Bridgewater State University English professor. She teaches creative writing and communication at Bridgewater. And she's going to focus, you know, how to make your college essay stand out, talk about topics that students should choose and just tips and tricks of, you know, creative writing and how to make your college essay stand out. We've never done anything like this before, so we're excited to offer it to our students. And lastly, we offered a workshop for students with unique circumstances. Prior to this summer, students who were not citizens were not able to apply for aid in terms of financial aid for federal or state when they were applying to college, which posed to be a really big barrier for a lot of our kids. And then they chose just not to apply to college because they couldn't afford it, which is terrible. But over the summer, the state of Massachusetts passed the tuition equity law, which allows students regardless of status to apply for state aid. So it is something and it is a step in the right direction and we wanted to get that information out to our students. So we had a bridge block information session and we gave them other resources to help them with the process. Just some partners and resources that we continue to have and that are new to us this year. We continue to work with Carisolus, which if you remember, we partnered with them, I believe the first year was last year or two years ago. And they are a resource for families who need mental health support. So we would put in the referrals for families seeking counselors for their students. Mass Hire is a great partnership that we formed also, I think last year was our first year and they are, they have helped us in terms of formulating career-based field trips for our students. So we've had three this year. We had a STEM-based field trip at Bridgewater State College, which focused on careers in computer programming, engineering, and cybersecurity. Couple of weeks ago, we had like a career day conference that focused on a variety of careers. So there was healthcare, business and finance, agricultural, government, education, IT, arts, human services, animal care, travel hospitality. It was just a big range of careers that students could explore. And then coming up on May 10th, we had a construction day field trip and those careers are going to be focused on building and remodeling, solar energy, landscaping, landscaping, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, engineering, welding, and more. So those are really great opportunities for our students to explore different types of careers and a lot of times these field trips have hands-on activities for the students to do, so they really seem to enjoy it. New for next year, we've been in conversation with Quincy College this year to do some dual enrollment classes within the school day. So we are going to pilot one, maybe two classes next year where students can take a class at Abington High School during the school day and also get credit, dual enrollment credit from Quincy College. This is a really great opportunity. It will come at a cost, I think, at around $350-ish if a student is interested in a dual enrollment credit, but it will be cheaper on the backend for students going to college. It will save them money and credits when they get there. And we've had a list of schools that Quincy College sent us and it is an extensive list of colleges that accept their credit. So we're really excited to see where this goes. Strengths in our department hasn't really changed. We're the same three counselors that we have been for a few years now. So each of us have 10-plus years' experience doing counseling. We have an ongoing commitment to social, emotional wellbeing and the academic success of all students. We collaborate amongst all stakeholders and technology and communication is something that we pride ourselves on. We try to get as much information and resources out to families as possible. So our goals from last year, I feel like these two goals are just something that we're always going to continue to want to improve and work on and get information out. So goal number one is to increase student knowledge of the variety of post-secondary options available to them. Again, we have Mass Hire who's done those career-based field trips, which is a huge part of getting students informed of different types of careers. Southeastern Technical Institute came in last week to do an information session on all the trades that they offer. We had Stonehill College come this year and Suffolk doing an information session about their admissions process. And again, Bridgewater State with the essay workshop and Massa Soya on the spot. So we're going to continue to have guests come in and talk to our students about all different types of options available to them. We will continue to be educated on local mental health resources available to our students. Just today, myself and Dr. Robbins had a conversation with Bamsi, who is the Brockton area multi-service incorporation. They serve a wide variety of issues within the area and we talked to them about doing a PD in May for the support staff, specifically geared towards substance abuse and supporting students and families who are going through substance abuse issues in their house. So we are looking forward to that professional development in May. Lastly, from last year, we wanted to create a place where students can look at summer enrichment programs. We often get the question from students and families of how do I make myself more marketable to colleges? This by no means is the end-all-be-all that a student has to do, but it is something that they can do is get involved in summer enrichment options. So a lot of colleges in the area will have pre-college sessions that students can enroll in over the summer and covers a wide variety of topics. So we have posted something about like veterinary services, law, psychology, creative writing, medicine, so there's a range. So whatever your student is interested in, if they want to boost their resume, and again, it's not the end-all-be-all in terms of doing this, but it is an option for students to help them make themselves a little bit more marketable. So we created a document, it is on the junior Canvas page and we presented it to our juniors during our workshops. Areas of growth for next year, again, we're going to want to continue the top two in terms of increasing student knowledge and variety of post-secondary options and also continue to be knowledgeable and educated on local mental health resources. This third bullet is something that we've been looking into this year. We want to research resources and programs from other school districts that support students transitioning back to school after an extended absence. So we've been seeing quite a few students who have had extended absences, whether that's due to mental health or physical health. And them transitioning back to school after like a few weeks, a month, it's tough. And we have, we always do a reentry meeting with these students, but we feel like they need more. Data shows that it really takes a student 10 weeks to fully get back into the swing of things after being out for a long period of time. And we've been wanting to see what other schools are doing to help these students transition better. So we've gone on a couple of school visits. We've gone to Bridgewater Rainham, who has a transition program. And we've also gone to Stoughton Middle School, who has a transition program. So we're just going to try to see, you know, some things from their program to make it feasible for our students in the next few years to come. The data that's informing these schools, so the majority of the work that we do do in the guidance department is social, emotional. So I wanted our goals to reflect, you know, the everyday work that we do. And we look at safety risk assessments and that's conducted by school psychologists, school adjustment counselors, or one of the three guidance counselors. And that's when a student has a high level of concern. So we are looking at these numbers. We're looking at our Carisolus referrals and we are also looking at our trauma incidents. So the Abington Police Department will make us aware if there's any police activity outside of school in a student's life, just so that we can be mindful of that student and anything that they've experienced the night before. And then we have the vision of the graduate. The two domains that we focus a lot on are the socially competent contributor and our self-aware individual. Just examples of how we do socially competent contributor. Says successfully navigate social situations. So if there's a peer conflict, one of the options we offer students is doing mediations. So one of the counselors would facilitate the mediations if both students agree to have the mediation. And we try to help them navigate their social conflicts together in an appropriate manner. In terms of using technology, the Naviance program, as you've seen, can help enhance learning of the self and others. Self-aware individual, prioritize and manage time effectively. So related to those long absences, we meet with students to try to figure out a plan to do their makeup work and manage their time effectively and manage all of the other things that they have going on in their life. And then intellectual risk-taking usually happens over course selection, whether or not they want to, you know, increase a level, jump up to an AP, an honors class. So we have those conversations with our students. And that's all I have. Do you have questions? Yes?
Yeah, just one. So I know at LaSalle, where I work, you know, obviously our counselors are overwhelmed by the mental health needs of our students. And our staff, you know, faculty are noticing that and wanting to help. So I don't know if this is something to think about for the future, but we have started having people come on site and give a training that's called Mental Health First Aid. It's like an eight-hour, it's almost like a first aid CPR course, but for mental health. It's in person, there's a paid, you know, trainer to do it that just gives our staff and faculty just a little bit more information and some tools to help work with students who are really struggling because our counseling center just can't keep up with it. It's fairly inexpensive, like I think it's like $1,500 for like a 15-person training class or something like that. Just a suggestion because obviously that's a huge theme. What you guys are doing, I know we don't have a whole bunch of you or counselors or psychologists on staff, so just something you guys might want to look into, just so staff and teachers feel maybe a little bit more equipped.
Yeah, that's, um, that's.
Because it's kind of, it's scary.
Interesting, if you have any more, like.
I can send you.
You can send me some, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
I do have one question. The alumni network, so Abington's a small community. I feel like everyone stays in touch. Is there any way, or do you already tap into the alumni network of students who've already chartered the course because they had similar interests or they went down a similar road with their college they were choosing between?
I'd love to be more proactive with our alumni community. It is challenging, I feel like, once they leave Abington in terms of like getting their, you know, emails and contacts, it's difficult. But we do, we did have some students come back last year to talk about like their college experience, which was really nice for our kids. But yes, I would love to have alumni come back. But yes, I would love to have alumni come back and, you know, speak to our students. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, okay. Great.
Christina, I just want to, the reaching out to other school districts for support, I just want to commend, it's a great idea, and I'm glad you guys are willing to reach out to other district students, see what works best, and try to incorporate it.
Thank you.
Excuse me, incorporate it here.
Yeah, we, I'm a part of this group. It's called Lighthouse, and it's all the directors of guidance on the Salle Shore, and we just bounce ideas off each other, and it, like some, a lot of the ideas that, you know, we have or, you know, a local school has, comes from that group, and they're just a really great resource, and they always welcome us to come in there, and we would welcome them to come here as well. So it is a really good, strong network that we have with local schools around here, so.
Great, that's great to know.
I just want to go home and play with Naviance.
Charlie has her username.
So, and I felt bad because I was not able to get to the.
Junior parent.
Junior parent night, and seeing what I saw here, I don't know how much the families at home were able to see it, but I do hope people take advantage of even looking, even if you don't think your student might be college-bound, sit with them and just see what's out there, because as someone who has started road tripping, this is a big, daunting, amazing, scary, messy, fabulous journey, and that piece of equipment is going to be very helpful.
I do believe Abington CAM recorded the junior parent night, so if you wanted to go back and look at it, they did demonstrate some features from Naviance program on there.
And to clarify one more time, since we're doing a plug at home, you don't have to be a junior parent to.
Correct.
Or be interested in it.
Exactly.
Actually, start early.
Yes, start early. I would pray that you start.
Yeah. Some of us started right on time and are wishing we had started early.
That's okay, we'll get there.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Park.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Up next from World Language Department, Ms. Christina Wilson.
All right, hi, everyone. I'm Christina Wilson, World Language Director. Thank you for having me. We are going to start with an activity. Oops. Okay. Um, I don't want to start the timer yet. Okay, I'm going to have everyone thinking about the upcoming summer. It is so close, right? What are you doing? Where are you going? Who are you spending time with? What is the weather going to be like? Do we all have some ideas in our head? Okay. You're going to turn and talk to a partner about your summer plans. There's two minutes, so the goal is you're each kind of talking for a minute, but you want to fill the whole time, so ask questions. The catch, you may not use any words that contain the letter E. Ready, set, go.
Hi.
So.
Hot, low, and mid.
Got A.
C.
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 Probably rain.
It is.
It is.
It is.
I will stay.
I will fly.
Fly.
I will fly.
North.
Go.
North.
Rock.
Island.
Yeah, island.
Pack.
Shop.
Turkey.
North.
North.
Cash.
Cash.
I am going to try not to.
Swim.
Swim.
Food.
My woman.
You.
Florida.
Yeah.
Shows.
I was thinking.
Summer, so.
Not skiing.
Yep.
Going to.
Playoffs.
Time is up.
Yep.
That was wonderful. I could hear some of the conversations, particularly between Chris and Jonathan over here. Anyone want to share how that went? Any feedback? What'd they think of the activity? Was it hard, easy? Did you have a lot to say?
It's fun.
Fun?
Yeah.
I like it.
It was.
You can use the letter E now to talk about it.
No.
Difficult at, nope, done.
Okay. We learned that activity at Proficiency Academy last summer, and I thought it was perfect to do here, and this graphic kind of leans to it. You all understood the task, right? You sat here, you thought about your summer plans, you're like, oh, I can picture myself at the beach, right, or traveling, or whatever you do, who you're hanging out with. But then it came time to communicate it, and you had to be very thoughtful about your words, because you couldn't use the letter E. So often, this is what our students, they sit in class, they understand what's going on, they can figure it out. We're using gestures, there's pictures, language that is comprehensible and understanding for them, and then it comes time for them to produce, and they have to really think hard about what they're going to say. So I just wanted to give you all a taste of kind of how our students feel in class, and you can kind of see the horse here, very descriptive at the rear end, which I did not draw this, I borrowed this from a teacher's Facebook group, and I think at the end where it says, when I hit record, it could be when I communicate with someone in some sort of authentic task. It doesn't have to be when they're recording for some sort of assessment or anything like that. Okay. Some progress on our areas for growth that I presented since last year. We all attended Proficiency Academy. I was going to thank everyone again for sending the department for that PD. It was fantastic. Teachers are implementing those strategies in their classrooms. We talk about it and reference it at Common Planning Time. We adopted Common Grading Breakdown aligned with our national standards and the mode of communication, so all Spanish classes, grade seven through twelve, have the same grading breakdown, and it's great. It was a little tricky at first, but we've really worked together to talk about what those assessments and what those assignments look like, and it seems to be going pretty well. The entire department this year has participated in the Avant, Advanced Training, which is connected to the stamp test, and that has been fantastic. Everyone will be certified at the end of this year. I think we have maybe one person who needs to finish the final test. Another thank you again for that professional development. We actually paused one of the trainings, and we were like, this is wonderful to really know what each proficiency level looks like, because those are things we can be more strategic and thoughtful about in our instruction with the students. Our textbook license ended this year. We've extended it for one more year, so we can be more thoughtful about what resources we will adopt for the following school year. So we're going to be piloting and sampling some things in the 2024-2025 school year with the goal of adopting some new resources for the 2025-2026 school year. Our departmental strengths, like I said, people are implementing strategies that we learned at Proficiency Academy, a lot more of like slowing down, what are realistic expectations for our students. Teachers are applying a lot more speaking activities, whereas more collaboration with course sharing, a lot of communication about where are you, what are you doing, I made this, do you want to use that? And we are implementing a lot of skills that we've learned from the Avant Training. I am very excited about what that looks like in the future, as we've just kind of finished the training in late winter, early spring. Moving forward, we're working on an instructional vision for our department. As we decided to get away from the textbook, we've thought about like, how are we going to kind of vet these resources that we're looking at? So we will be looking at a draft of an instructional vision at our Common Planning tomorrow to really think about what is the goal of our program, what do we want our students to be able to do at the end, and then use that to guide our decisions that we make towards the resources that we're going to adopt. Again, we'll be vetting them with that, and we are also moving forward, we'll be looking at our scope and sequence. Since we are looking at our instructional vision, what does that look like? Are we really thinking about what are the skills we want students to be able to do at the end of every course, what feels valuable and meaningful to students? During course selection this year, I had, I teach sophomores, a lot of them asked about AP Spanish, it's in the program of study, so we're looking to offer that, not next school year, but the following school year. I'm actually AP-trained, so I'm hoping I would get to teach it. So that's a pretty exciting opportunity for students. Some overlap with hopefully where our instructional vision is heading and the vision of graduate, more authentic sources, including things that students would see outside the walls of the building, and sometimes those are challenging, the actual source, but we just adjust the task for students so that they're seeing more materials that they would see in real life. We're aligned with proficiency and what the students will be able to do outside these four walls. We're looking to adopt curriculum or resources that feel more meaningful and relevant to students that they can connect to. You know, this is a very different time from when I was learning the language, or maybe many of you took a language course, and so really trying to think about what themes, topics are really relevant and interesting to students to really get them to engage and buy in to learning the language. Along with that, thinking more of like depth versus breadth with skills, what can we do really, really well versus not trying to like cover a whole bunch of stuff just for the sake of doing it? That's kind of where we're heading, and some things we're looking towards with the vision and guidance. Of course, keeping with last year, I had to include a meme. I really tried to know my audience here, because people I think would know this Saturday Night Live skit with Will Ferrell and Christopher Walken and the fever and need for cowbell. And he said, I've got a fever for applying language, so I'm curious more input. I think this just follows up with the last slide about depth versus breadth, like breadth, we want more exposure for students, more practice as possible, wanting them to do some skills really, really well. So I thought that was funny. And then lastly, our stamp data. Here's the data from the last few years. I just, excuse me, because I just looked at this yesterday, we just assessed stamp a couple of weeks ago. So it was before vacation, most of the tests weren't graded, and the majority of them are, so I checked yesterday, and it looks like we have about ten students who are going to qualify for the SEAL this year. There's some tests that aren't graded, and we do have seven or eight students who will be eligible to retake one section. And so I sat there yesterday, I was like, man, this is not as many as last year, but when I was scrolling through the scores, I felt like students were overall doing better, so I pulled some extra data, and here's what I. These are the scores, average scores from this spring compared to last spring, and it's broken down by each of the skills that are assessed. So we can see reading has gone up, I mean, point, eight, point seven. Writing has gone up, point, I've done six, you know, rounding with the math here. Listening has gone up, and the only one that has gone down a little bit is speaking, and it's something when we do briefs as a department, I mean, we struggle with trying to, struggle with the students to get them to really buy in and take the speaking part of the test seriously. They're so, so nervous, very aware that they're talking to a computer, that they're in a room with other students. So we're constantly having conversations about how can we make that more productive and valuable for students to feel like they really are demonstrating what we know they can do. Then the last part here, I just broke it out by the number, like each of the scores. Now, to qualify for the SEAL, a student needs to earn a six on each of the four domains, so this just kind of breaks it down, how they've got, the growth students have done from 2023 to 2024, and you can see the shift, there are scores that are higher for each skill. I'm not going to go over each one, but as you just kind of look at it, you can see that there's some improvement. All steps in the right direction. And speaking, I mean, some of it kind of stays right around, there's a lot of fours. They're pretty close from each year. And that's all I have. Any questions? Yes.
So this might not be possible from a resource standpoint. For the speaking, because I know particular, mine was able to retake that section of it and pass, and she had said it was just so much easier to do it because she wasn't in.
A room.
That room with everyone else, and it was just her one-on-one with the proctor. So I know it's probably not possible to do that when you have ninety-eight kids or whatever taking it, but, or is that even allowed? Like for the tests, is there some way that kids can like.
Lock themselves off.
Yeah, or like be in some sort of environment where that isn't such a barrier, because I think.
I think that's something we want to look at. So last year, we had tested in the seminar room. This year, we tested, we bundled it with MCAS testing, so students were in classrooms, so they were in smaller groups. You know, when we were like, turn, turn away from your partner, like look at the wall, like anything, they have headphones on.
Give us back in elementary school.
Everyone's talking at the same time, really try to pump them up for it.
It's hard.
It's so hard.
Yep.
It's so hard.
So it might be possible.
It might.
To make smaller groups, depending on availability of space and staff.
Correct. Yep. I mean, that could be something that maybe happens on a different day in even smaller groups, for sure.
Maybe we have a benefactor in town that wants to donate noise-canceling headphones for everyone to use.
I mean, or even something like, like a testing.
Yeah.
Cardboard thing, so that, so you just like, you feel like you're in your own little cubicle.
Like at the voting booth or something.
Even though they're in the same room. I don't know, gives a little more sense of like privacy.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. Any other question? Danielle.
When they do the speaking, are they used to doing the speaking all at the same time on a regular basis? Is it something that they do daily, weekly, so that it's not a big deal when they go, or is the only time that they all speak at the same time? Or one of the only times? Or depending on the teacher?
I would say, that is a great question. Um, you know, and I know in my class, they're speaking all the time, all of them at the same time.
Yep.
And I know Kate Ward, who teaches Spanish for, does practice for the stamp, so that they, yes, they do have like a test-like situation where they are practicing the speaking in the situation where they would be doing it on the test, where they're all doing it at the same time. But I mean, even in class, sometimes it's hard, too.
It's terrible.
You know, it's just like, once they get going, like.
It is very, it's awful, I feel bad for them, it's.
I know, I know.
But if they're, I was just thinking, if they weren't used to it, that that could be.
Yep.
A potential, not fix, but make it a little bit better. Do they get a grade? Does taking the stamp to motivate them, does it count as part of their term grade?
We have not had it count towards their grade.
Because we found that counting it is something for sure. If it's part of something, then maybe on the speaking, too, they'll take it more seriously.
I think that's definitely a conversation we can have. I think it's been like, yes, how do we get them to buy in? It's also a test, we're not, we don't have ownership over grading. I don't, I think it's definitely something we'll continue talking about, for sure.
And then the only other comment was the Avant Training is no joke.
It's no joke, it is really hard.
It's brutal, so I appreciate that you guys have all put yourselves through that, but it is definitely eye-opening and life-changing for teachers as they start to kind of at first resist it and then embrace it a little bit, and it just, I think, overall is a great experience for our kids.
Yes, yes.
To get that kind of look, that kind of take on what they're producing.
Well, I mean, I even told the students when they were, when I was proctoring the stamp, I'm like, just saying some words gets you to a level of proficiency, like stringing them together to give a whole sentence bumps you up even more. And like at, when we were doing the activity at the beginning, like I saw some people, like I heard some people just saying words, fishing, you know, pool, and some trying to string together a sentence, I was like, oh, man, this really connects to, back to the levels of proficiency. So I'm very excited to, to see where that goes, but the training itself, as far as the teacher, was very challenging. I mean, I myself, hours to pass that final test, hours. Thanks. I did do it. I wanted to make sure I was passed before I came to present here, to all of you. That was the goal.
Much appreciated, and I know our kids love your classes, so thank you.
Thanks.
Can I just ask you one quick question?
Yeah.
I think I might have missed it. What do they need to do to qualify for the SEAL? What do they need to score?
Like stringing them together to give a whole sentence bumps you up even more. And like when we were doing the activity at the beginning, like I saw some people, like I heard some people just saying words, fishing, you know, pool. And so I'm trying to string together a sentence. It was like, oh man, this really connects to, back to the levels of proficiency. So I'm very excited to, to see where that goes. But the training itself, as far as the teacher, was very challenging. I mean, I myself, hours to pass that final test, hours. Thanks. I did do it. I wanted to make sure I was passed before I came to present here, to all of you. That was the goal.
Much appreciated, and I know our kids love your classes, so thank you.
Thanks.
Can I just ask you one quick question?
Yeah.
I think I might have missed it. What do they need to do to qualify for the SEAL? What do they need to score?
They need to have a score of six on each of the four domains. And they can do a retake if they have six on three of the four and they get a five on one.
Okay.
And so when I was looking yesterday, we have about seven or eight students who fit that criteria to do a retake. And they'll reset that section. I can just email Avant and then they can retake it.
Okay.
And then there's also an MCAS.
Yep.
ELA, which is minimum score on there also.
Okay, okay.
To be proficient.
Both languages.
Both, yeah, it makes sense, yeah, okay.
And you can see, there was a multiple, many languages we tested in this year. French, Haitian Creole, Portuguese.
Italian.
Italian.
The, the mission was to bring it forward. The evidence is here, it's, it's working. Thank you. Even over the course of the year, it's, the progress is great and we know what we're up against. So this is all positive, positive news. Anecdotally, just I, having three kids who are in language, the stories I would hear previously were about, this is the funny thing that happened in Spanish, or like the, this is what somebody said. And now I'm hearing more about, this is what I learned today. Or they'll just break into conversation in Spanish. And so if you are wondering what families are seeing on the other side, at least I can give you one that's, that is seeing what you guys are trying to achieve actually come out in action on the other side. So more than even just a test score for lifelong learning, I think you are making some great strides. So thank you to you and the rest of your department.
Thank you for saying that. I will make sure I relay that to the department tomorrow.
Thanks.
It's great news to hear.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So, and I'm drawing back from a very long time ago when I took language. Is, does our curriculum include not only language written and spoken, but also cultural and art? And, and do you focus mostly on Mexico or Spain, or does it vary by grade or teacher?
The current textbook, it varies, like to include a variety of countries, cultures. It is a lot more based on the language and I think the goal would be moving forward as we look at other resources to think about bringing even more cultural components in. But it's not strictly Spain or Mexico, it's all sorts of countries.
Great.
Yep.
And how is your enrollment as you get into the later grades? I know there's always scheduling nightmares when you get to high school, but do you have students who peter out of interest in drop language? Or do you have people that drop language mostly because it doesn't fit into the schedule?
Both, if I'm being honest. The numbers were down this year, so that could also contribute a little bit to the low numbers with the stamp and the SEAL. They're back up next year. And you know, I've talked to students, like you're a strong student. And it's like, but I want to take this AP, or I want to take this. And when it's a singleton course, they don't have a choice, or they're just like, I'm done, I don't. So I think it's a combination of both. I just don't really, you know, have a good answer. It's a personal goal of mine, just want to, you know, I want them to take it all four years. I'll be curious to see how many students, you know, want to take AP if that's offered in two years. You know, always take Spanish, take it forever, want the value in it.
One thing that held me on to Spanish through my senior year was the enticing trip to Spain that happened. Have we ever considered a trip only for language students? That you have to take the language in order to take the trip?
I have not.
So that's why I stayed in it for Cinco de Mayo celebration, because that was always super fun.
Yep.
And to go to Spain. And I know it's, you know, we do some fantastic trips at the high school level, so I wouldn't want to detract from the enrollment in those trips. But I do think if, if we as a district and as a school want to encourage participation in language, that might be a way to entice students.
I think it's definitely
I think it's very expensive to go to Spain.
Something we can talk about. Yep.
I can say for my senior, she really would have liked to take Spanish this year, but she couldn't fit in her schedule.
Yeah.
We're facing the same.
Made the decision since she had the stamp piece, you know, for as far as college applications went, you know, guidance counselor thought she was covered, but she was disappointed that it was, it really was just a schedule conflict. She would have loved to continue to take it.
We had a student who graduated last year reached out to Christina Park about her, the other Christina, getting her stamp scores because she qualified for the SEAL and she was going to get college credit.
Oh, wow.
In Russian, yep. Which is awesome. So I think, you know, making sure we're really explaining to kids the benefits of the language programming.
And with, you know, if I can just add, just tie it with Naviance, I don't know if that's something you can search on, but you know, if you have a list of schools that you're interested in, some of those schools, you should look at their requirements because they may, you know, require or strongly suggest that you take X amount of years of a language. And if your child has a school where that's one of their target schools, you want to make sure you fulfill those requirements.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wilson, appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having me, everyone.
No problem.
Thanks.
Principal reports for the 24-25 High School Improvement Plan, Mr. Jonathan Bourne.
Good evening and thank you, everybody. I don't have any activities for you. I'm just going to talk at you. Starting with the school improvement plan, I figure the best way to move through this is to go by section, just to see if there's any questions on the section as we move on. So the school improvement plan opens with a list of our student achievements over the past year. And I know there's a lot of questions and wonderings about some of the data here. I just thought I'd pause to see if anyone had any questions on any of those items. We do circle back to them. By all means, we can, we can jump back. This isn't the only step at this. Next, moving on would be a summary of the goals from the previous year's school improvement plan. There is some carryover into this year's, the future school improvement plan I wanted to address too. So one of the goals last year was looking for opportunities to incorporate high-quality performance assessments, which is the next follow-up from the vision of the graduate into the school. I'd like to report that we had two successful pilots with that, with the science department in the winter, in January, and social studies doing that with juniors in April. And the big takeaways are, we learned from the science and really kudos to Ms. Corbett and her department for being on the point with that. Lot of takeaways, lot of learnings that we will turn around to Mr. Scott, the social studies department, and they were able to implement a short time after. Our department had, the basic takeaway is, this is a good thing, we need to do more of it, we will get better as we do more of that. So these high-quality performance assessments will continue to be a cornerstone of our learning experiences for students here in the school. The second goal was looking at how we utilize bridge block time as well as the overall schedule at the high school. We had spent a great amount of time looking at bridge block. We developed PLCs this year, professional learning communities. One of them focused based on teacher interest on bridge block. And so the teachers met there to clarify school-wide expectations, just to make sure that it's being implemented as consistently as possible throughout the building. In addition to that, thanks to Ms. Casey, who helped spearhead bringing in new technology with MyFlex Learning, which is a different software to manage that, which speaks more smoothly with Aspen, which allows teachers to schedule students easier and better place them where they need to be for academic help. We also begin as a school, looking at different scheduling models out there, not just at bridge block, but the overall schedule to see that if we're using our time and how we're using our time to best support our students in the work of their day-to-day school, as well as achieving the targets in the high-quality performance assessments. One of the things I just wanted to point to that you'll see in the future goals is the bell schedule will continue to be a piece for us to explore as a school, to look at, to see if we're using our time in the best way possible to hit some of the targets you've heard today and we've discussed over the years at multiple forums. Any questions on the progress of last year's goals?
Just a comment, and I think we've talked, I feel this has come up a few times, so this is probably not new. I appreciate those tests that the departments are doing and just chatting with students this year's current freshmen. They do still feel a little bit, and I know we didn't implement them until this year, correct? So we'll, we should see hopefully some improvement. But student, there were still students who are failing at a disadvantage compared to their peers when taking their first final exams, first semester, freshman year. And the comment that they
In college, not in high school. So yes, yeah.
So I appreciate that we are taking steps to help these kids. And again, there, I think I mentioned this a while ago, their biggest comment, the thing that I saw most, was that they just, they felt like they wished that they focused a little bit more on learning study strategies. And I know they do. It wasn't, they, there were many things that they wished, but overall, that was one of the pieces, was they, they didn't feel as prepared as they would have wanted to study for those tests. So I think that we're doing that by having these, these tests.
Thank you. And one of the features of this that I didn't mention, but mentioned in a letter to parents, senior parents in the winter, is we intentionally ask other departments who also hold assessments due around the same time as these things to kind of create or simulate that end-of-term crunch that kids who move on to college or second, two-year schools after high school have some experience with, oh my, it's all due the same week, how do I manage my time? How do I plan ahead? We, I think, all could do a better job ourselves as well as teaching kids how to better manage time in the future, but that is absolutely forward-facing to that, to that need.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? So for the next school year, the two goals that I would propose for Abington High School would be to identify and implement school-wide best practices for grades and grade reporting aligned with the vision of the graduate. Ms. Grafton, you had the same question just a moment ago to Ms. Wilson about grading, SEAL by literacy. This is something that is absolutely a topic that we would like to spend the time as a team, as a school, to have a common read and a common learning, learning experience. We have, over the course of two years, studied area schools. South Shore Bo-Tech is one of them that is participating in a DESI-sponsored grant to look at grades and grading. And one of the texts that they use and a lot of our professionals that have come to us is the book, Grading for Equity, which is a really, a well-written, nice, in-depth study about best practices in grading. So next year, as a school, we aim to use faculty meeting time and other school-based time to go through that book, to take some of the lessons from it, hopefully pull away some two or three or four best practices that we can all agree to when it comes to grades and grading. It is absolutely, you know, one of the most important things that we do, and we talk about GPA, post-secondary planning, and we would like to just get some more consistency, more philosophically, in how and why we do what we do, to inform whether a student and what a student knows and is able to do. And so that is not a small task, but it is the beginning of a journey that I think we're all looking to take together. We've had so much turnover in staff that everyone brings their own kind of lens and perspective to this. This might help us all have as a, as a staff, like I said, that common learning experience. Any questions on that first goal?
If I could just add, I think, and I don't have a high school student, so I'm not speaking from experience here, it sounds as if certain classes, certain teachers have different expectations for students in terms of if something is due today, is it really due today? What can I do for a retake? Can this student retake, but that student not? I think just laying out student expectations, and maybe the teachers do it well and the student doesn't receive the information, I don't know. But I think that is a critical piece to that goal, is just making sure that students understand the expectations. And that way, there's, even if teacher A does it differently than teacher B, it was clearly outlined, like when you go to college, there's this whole this, it's very clear. I don't know if that exists today, but I think that would be.
Yeah, I think if, I don't know if this is quite an answer, but I think what you just shared is that so many teachers bring their own personal experiences of what they've seen in the classroom to inform how strict deadlines are, what extensions are, and it does vary. And so I think we're never, I don't think we'll ever get to the place where it's like, this is what everyone does all the time, everywhere. Certain grades, certain content areas vary, but what this book does, among other things, is what do you do with late work? What do you do about late work? What's the responsible thing to do? And I think what the book might even recommend is not something we do, but it will still elicit a conversation on what should we do. And then that way, we could create some guiding principles about that because the more familiar students are with seeing the same expectation in most places, it's, it sticks. And that's what we're aiming to do.
That's great.
Thank you.
Can I just make one comment on what you just said?
Sure.
I loved it. I loved that you just said that you're not going to let the book dictate what you're going to do, you're going to use that for conversation. I love that. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
It's a good book, but it's not like the book, you know? So we're definitely going to use it as, just as I said, to spark some conversation. The second school improvement goal will be looking at school structures such as, but not limited to, the waterfall schedule that we currently have and bridge block to maximize teaching, learning, and support academic interventions at Abington High School. Coming out of the pandemic, we have now really kind of had two years with this waterfall schedule, really two and a half since before the pandemic. And it's just, there are some things that we want to look at. In particular, that our first period class is always at the beginning of the day, our last period class is always at the end of the day. People operate differently at different times of the day. And when you have the same kids at the same time of day, you tend to get similar products. Late students or tired students in the morning, students who are kind of at the max at the end of the day. So one of the things we're looking to do is, is what is the best schedule? What is the best way to use our time to help do the things that we want to do in the classroom? And hopefully, this kind of works in harmony with what we want to do with the high-quality assessments, more time on learning, better depth than breadth. I think you heard that from Ms. Wilson. Does our time, does our schedule support those priorities? So we will, we have spent some time as a staff looking at some options, we will continue to look at some options. This is an area that as we start to come to crystallize some options, there will be communication in particular with the Abington High School School Council about what those options are and seeking student, parent, and teacher feedback on what those are. But functionally, it is to look at like, here's what we're thinking. We'd love to run a little pilot segment of, if we do come up with a proposed schedule in the midst of the year, to do it, to learn it, to see what it feels like, to use as feedback. Importantly, one of the things I think, just to be honest, we're looking at in potential is longer periods. If we do get to a place where we have longer periods, there is an absolute need for professional instruction on our part to how to use that time differently, how to best use a longer period time to deliver the goals of the classroom. So I know some of the concerns may be if we stretch the period out that's too long for a student to remain focused. To be honest with you, if someone is speaking at students for 50 minutes straight, which is our current period, like that's already too long. So it will be looking at how to use that time to be productive, to get that depth, and depth of understanding would really be the goal.
Mr. Bourne, can I just ask you like probably a very basic question, but I just don't know.
Sure.
And I don't know how many others. Can you explain waterfall schedule?
Yes. This is one where a picture might help. For those who have any students at Abington High School, we schedule students into seven periods and six meet every day. And our period seven cuts through diagonally, replaces a period every day.
Okay.
If that helps. So the period seven class moves throughout different time slots throughout the day, but every other class stays static.
Okay. And it replaces something each day?
Correct. Many, many high schools use what's called a rotating schedule, where every class moves through some different time slot of the day in a regular rotation.
Okay.
Yep.
Long before I sat in this chair, Peter was so gracious to entertain my conversations. And one of the very first things that I asked, would it be possible, is a rotating schedule? And I am so glad that we're talking about it. I wish that it was sooner for my own kids to benefit from. But it is true that the kids are better at different times of the day. And I can just say that from experience, I've taught 57 minutes, 65 minutes, and 90 minutes. And you make it work. It'll, it'll be fine. But go rotating schedule, please.
Thank you.
I, I agree with that, especially if you know, like I know, looking in, was it Aspen, sometimes alarming to see like one certain class, how many like absences or tardies they have, because you don't realize like, oh, that's kind of always the first period. And if you have a kid that wears braces, they're going every few weeks, they have doctor's appointments that first period, or that last one, because they get dismissed early for something, are always going to be negatively impacted. And that's not fair to the teachers either, to have to constantly deal with that. either, to have to constantly deal with that. So I'm also a big fan of the rotating schedule.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. That's the school improvement plan? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Vasilevsky. Moving on to the proposal, proposed change, substantive changes to the Abington High School Student Handbook. So these have been reviewed since the winter by the Abington High School School Council. What you see in front of you was passed by unanimous vote at our meeting before April break. Attendance is, there are no actual substantive changes. We did spend a good amount of time fixing up the language to reflect what we actually do in that. The senior privilege, we are going to strike from the handbook. That is only because we've gotten feedback from our staff about the structure of our wave week Wednesday schedule days, which would be tomorrow, that end with a mentor group. That just proved to be really challenging structure, to, to have that scheduling period at the end of the day, for one, but then to schedule kids out for something in the neighborhood of 10 to 12 days. So what we'll be looking to do next year is to take away that mentor group at the end of the day, and potentially keep our rotating schedule through a wave week Wednesday schedule. We'll keep the one-hour later start, we'll keep the one-hour common planning time. But because the senior privilege was attached to that mentor group at the end of the day, it will no longer be at the end of the day. Mentor groups will now be once per cycle during a bridge block period, which is more frequent, and it, and I think it just helps a lot of different things. So because of that, the senior privilege as written wouldn't apply. In the code of conduct, a lot of the language we have in our handbook refers to nicotine and smoking, but not vaping, or e-cigarettes. So this would be basically throughout the handbook where nicotine and smoking is referenced, we would add where appropriate vaping, just to capture the current issues we're dealing with. The last piece related to search and seizures and adding the bold and italicized language on your right, that school officials may use metal detectors. These are handheld wand metal detectors as part of a reasonable search. And just to clarify, that is because we have some reason to search a student. It is not just us in the hallways doing that, or passive metal detectors like we see at the airport. It has been helpful in the previous issue with recovering vapes and other contraband off students that they should not have. We are currently using it. We did talk to our school attorney, said it's okay. Just make sure you add in the handbook going forward. Here it is. Any questions?
My only question is, do we need to see pages eight to 12? In, see attached, add, see attached language titled, et cetera. I don't have it.
In, in any of the copies, you had copies, we looked at a variety of paperwork. Does any of that paperwork have copies of that language in it?
Of?
Of pages?
So Jonathan, we have for attendance, proposed language, it says, add, see attached language title, proposed, Abington High School Student Handbook attendance language.
There aren't any substantive changes to the language. You're reducing the language to be clearer.
He's asking about this.
Yes, there, uh, don't. Which is, Heidi, if you?
This is the actual, um, this was the draft that we had in the actual school council meeting. So I think what he's saying is...
You don't have to see it because there are no substantive changes? The policy isn't changing? The language describing what the high school does as a result of the, it's clearer? The policy is made clearer? So you don't need to see it. But if the committee wants to see it before voting it, the committee can see it before voting it, is the answer. Does that make sense?
Somewhat.
Because the way this reads to me is, you like, deleted five pages of the handbook.
Yeah, delete everything from pages eight to 12, except for tardies, school, and dismissals from school.
I, I think it's reasonable to say that you would like to see what is.
Yes, I'm not, I'm not going to vote to pass, I'm not going to vote on the attendance until I see it. So I can say that. I'll vote on the other three, but I'm not going to vote on the attendance until I see it. That's me personally, anyway.
Is that the copy of it?
I have a copy on me, yeah.
Would the, would the committee like to pass over? That's my fault, by the way. Jonathan said, what do we put in the packet? And I said, Jonathan, if it's not a substantive change, let's not, let's not put the rewrite, because it's not changing the policy in the packet. So that's my responsibility. Let me start with that. Secondly, I respect that the committee wants to see it before the rewrite of the existing policy, before voting on this. And we can either do that by photocopying that and getting that to people, or we can come back to the next meeting, whatever the pleasure of the committee.
Do we have to vote? I mean, we can, you can send it to us if you want. We can look at it, but I think we need to vote on it in a meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm okay with voting the other, I'm okay with making a motion to pass the other three for now, and just tabling the attendance piece until the next
I personally would feel better if everyone had a chance to read what's written before.
Yeah, the attendance piece for, okay. So is everybody okay with passing over the attendance part of it for now, then? And you want to go ahead? Are you okay with voting on the other three changes? Okay. So I'll be looking for a motion to approve the changes in the student handbook as presented for senior privilege, code of conduct, and search and, search and seizure.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think that's everything, right? Thank, that's everything, right?
Uh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Up next is Dr. Robbins for the Director of People Personnel Services with the homeschool request, and I think a quick announcement, too, right?
Yep. So first of all, we, we received kind of an end-of-the-year request for a new home education program for a student in fourth grade. I've reviewed the application materials and, and have ensured that the plan includes curriculum that addresses the state-defined standards, that there are clear, that there are clear assessment plans in place, and, and that the individual who will be leading the home education program is, is qualified to do so. So I turn it over to the committee to see if they would wish to vote on the home education program that's been proposed.
James, I think you spelled it out, but it's only for the remainder of this year, right? Doesn't, is not for next year, right now?
That, that's correct. This individual would have to make a request prior to the start of the school year for a new one.
Anybody have any questions about it?
I have a, just a generic question. Do students who are homeschooled take the MCAS?
Um, no, they don't.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, yeah.
Just a question.
Only during COVID. So if nothing else, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the homeschool request as presented.
I can make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, and also, I'd like to just make two announcements on behalf of our District CPAC. So the first of which is, as of April 12th, we've opened up nominations for the Excellence and Special, Special Education Award. This award's been present for the past two school years, and it's just an opportunity for families to nominate a special educator that's had a significant impact on their child or family. The special educator could include a special education teacher, or a related service provider, for example, speech-language therapist, physical therapist, occupational therapist, or paraprofessional. So depending on the nominations we receive, the CPAC will either offer one award to a, to a special educator. But if we get enough nominations, there'll be two awards to a special educator and a support, and a member of, a support professional, or a paraprofessional. So that nominations have been open since April 12th. There'll be a reminder notice sent tomorrow through Constant Contact, so that people can readily access the nomination link. And there'll be a final reminder notice on May 6th. The plan is that all nominations will be issued to the CPAC Board on May 14th, and the announcement will be made on the, on the May 22nd School Committee Meeting. Also, on the, I'm sorry, the May 28th School Pack, School Committee Meeting. Also, we happen to have a PD Day on May 29th, and on that day, our CPAC will go around to schools and offer, like, nice little tokens of appreciation for everyone that's been nominated. Any questions about the award?
I think it's a great idea. I know it started last year, so thank you to the CPAC.
And then just one other notice. For folks, for folks who are not aware, starting September 1st of this upcoming school year, we'll be, for the first time in 20 years, using a new individualized education program document, or essentially the IEP form that we'll be using. And there have been substantial changes made to that document. For those of us who work in special education, we believe those changes are all for the better. They increase the areas that we have to identify where students would need support, you know, including, like, extracurriculars, you know, timed, time of the day outside of the classroom. So it's just a much better defined document. But the big idea is, when developing an IEP, that parents are partnering with us. And for parents to be equal partners, we believe we have to educate them on what the form entails, so that going into the new school year, they'll be able to kind of, like, reflect and plan going into a meeting. So on May 14th, we'll be having a CPAC meeting, but that meeting will include present, a presentation on the new IEP document. So I'll be one of the presenters to share a component of the IEP, but we also, we also have a parent volunteer who will speak to the, to the parent concern section, and we'll have other members of our special ed department share information about various components of the IEP, including a number of our team chairpersons. So we just want to announce that, that we think this is a significant meeting, and we encourage all parents to attend again, May 14th, here in the library, to review the new IEP document.
What time is the meeting?
It is at 6:30. And also, parents will be able to join, to join virtually, if they're not able to be here in body. And we, of course, can record that as well and make it available.
Is there a link that they have to go to if they need to join virtually, or?
Uh, yep. Yeah, there will be a link in that. And through Constant Contact shortly, we'll have that issued out to the community.
Okay. I might.
You should.
IEP, I love you.
Oh, yeah. Yep. And on Chris's suggestion, just, I'm going to mention that the IEP document is actually state-issued, so it's not, it's not, we're not able to create the new template. This is not unique to Abington. It's just a statewide document.
Um, so are all families going to be flipping to the new document as they do their three-year reevals, or their annual, just?
Yep, exactly. So like, for those, for those who are, who have some knowledge of IEPs, know that they're written for a calendar year. So any IEP that was written this year extends for a calendar year. So let's just say your family had a meeting today. It would, it would extend until April of next year, and that'll be on the current, current document. But any meetings that take place next year will be all on the new document. And like I said, this just encourages teams to consider all the support needs during the day that the previous document didn't encourage teams to do. So it's, so people do regard it as, like, an evolution and, and support for students.
And are our current IEPs offered in English only, or do we have translations available? And will this new format allow for easy translations if needed?
Yep, yeah. It's, it's mandatory that for any, any family whose home language is any language other than English, that we do provide a translation to it. And the expectation is that it'll be easy, it'll be readily, it'll be easy for us to translate the new document as well. We don't anticipate any unique hurdles to that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks for the question.
Thank you, Dr. Robbins. Up, up next is Dr. Michellea with the, to present 24, 2024, 2029, Abington Public Schools Department Strategic Plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. So I have for you tonight the first two pieces of our Abington Public Schools Strategic Plan. This process began last summer with a meeting with the administrative team and a facilitator, a strategic planning facilitator. And that began the process, and then, thank you. We had a 27-member strategic planning committee, and that included Melanie and Heidi, thank you, that was compromised, comprised of school administrators, comprised, made up of, school administrators, parents, teachers, community members, paraprofessionals, a cross-section of the district, representatives from all of our schools, and, and it was a very engaged and a group, and we really appreciate all the time and effort that, that this group provided for us. Like I said, we met four times. Each meeting was over three hours, and a lot of product was produced, and, and what you're going to see today is, is a result of that. So the committee, the strategic plan defi, is, defines our mission, vision, guiding principles, objectives, and initiatives, which will guide the district for the next five years. It informs the goals of the superintendent, school improvement plans, and teacher, teacher goals. So the strategic plan is the overarching document, and everything else that we do feeds from the strategic plan. So the timing, actually, of our new strategic plan is also, is also very timely with a new superintendent. So part of what the group did was, we looked at our current, our previous mission and vision, and made what I would call non-substantive changes to the previous mission and vision. And I'm not going to read it, but it is, it will be in all of our documents. And it all, we also reviewed our guiding principles. And also, those did not change substantively. We believe in making decisions in the best interest of our students, providing challenging educational experiences that build character, et cetera, et cetera. So those are, the remain, the, our guiding principles remain the same. But the big work that this group did over those five meetings was look at and develop strategic objectives, strategic initiatives, and to be done in the fall, or presented in the fall, will be action planning. Tonight, we're going to talk about our strategic objectives and our strategic initiatives. The group identified four overarching objectives, or categories. Teaching and learning, communication, culture and inclusion, and district operations. The way a str, the strategic plan is set up, I should also say that our process followed the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Planning for Success model for strategic planning. So this is a DESI model that starts with our strategic objectives. Our strategic objectives are overarching categories. And within each of those categories are strategic initiatives. So we review our, first, our teaching and learning strategic objectives. Teaching and learning is to improve student outcomes through vertically and horizontally-aligned curriculum, instruction, and assessment. So overarching objective. Then we have four initiatives within each, within this particular objective. Refine the district-wide vision of teaching and learning. Develop school-based, age-based, end-of-year expectations linked to the vision of the graduate. Update procedures for writing, revising, and implementing a vertically and horizontally-aligned curriculum. And refine and align existing response to intervention, or RTI, practices to implement a P-12 multi-tiered system of supports adhering to the Department of Education's guidance to improve student outcomes. I also want to highlight that these four, and then you'll see another, about 12, initiatives won't all be addressed in year one. The administrative team has looked at all the initiatives and selected five, four or five for next year. This is a five-year plan. So this is something that we'll be looking at and addressing the different initiatives over the five years. So you won't see all of these as goals for next year. The second strategic objective is communication. Enhance methods and practices for homeschool communication. And the strategic initiatives included in, under, under communication, update centralized system and practices for homeschool communication. Review and revise communication practices for active and resolved emergencies in conjunction with local authorities. Refine methods and practices for consistent home-to-school communication within and across schools and classrooms. Our three, our third strategic objective is around culture and inclusion, to improve inclusive practice, procedures and practices to increase academic success, social-emotional learning, and engagement for all students. We have three strategic initiatives in this category. To sustain and expand inclusive practices and training for all students to benefit diverse learners. Refine and enlot, and align social-emotional classroom practices for all students to develop their social-emotional skills and competencies. And increase family awareness of opportunities to be involved in school-based activities. And our fourth strategic objective is facilities and district operations provide high-quality, safe teaching and learning opportunities for all students, staff, and families. And we have four strategic initiatives in this category. And we have four strategic initiatives in this category. Maintain innovative and physically safe schools by implementing best practices and prevent, preventative measures. Enhance and diversify hiring and retention practices using an equity lens. Develop a committee to evaluate infrastructure and make recommendations based on current and future teaching and learning. Review and refine long-term, sustainable budget strategies to address our district needs. So, what I just presented to you are the, our strategic objectives and the strategic initiatives of the strategic plan. Between now and the fall, the administrative, well, we've already started and will continue as an administrative team to develop action plans on those selected, um, strategic initiatives. In the fall, there will be, um, administrators responsible for each of the four sections. And will come and present to you our action plans for those selected initiatives. And will be reported on how we are progressing through the strategic plan, and, um, yearly. Melanie and Heidi, did you, um, have anything you wanted to add?
I'll start by saying, when you see that many names on a committee, uh, you can probably expect chaos. And this was anything but. I had never been a part of something that was so well-managed, defined, um, focused. My takeaway from that experience was I, I learned so much just from sitting in that room, so I was grateful I had the opportunity to do it. Uh, great thoughtful conversations and just so well-presented and managed. And even the fact that it put us in a position to talk to other people fairly constantly. So we were always hearing other viewpoints. It opened my understanding more of how other people view their roles within the school or areas where they think we can do better. So, I'm glad I was able to take part. I think we have a great start here, and I think there were a lot of solid conversations that were realistic about what we can really focus on for today. And knowing that long-term, we've got some, some real big conversations ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree. I think, um, as a large group, we, these themes were common throughout all individuals, but there were a lot of different perspectives, there were differing opinions. It opened my eyes to people's experiences that are very different than mine. So, I think we had a great group of people and a diverse group of people in the room. And I think that this will really help us focus our efforts, both, both in terms of time and the goals that we set for our administration, our buildings, our teachers, and our students. I think it will help us focus those objectives each year and help the school committee and the administration keep us accountable. I think, you know, you, there's a lot of things that we all want to do, um, when it comes to public education, and I think this is really gonna help us focus to make the best impact. So, I'm excited.
Thank you. You talked about the, having a group of twenty-seven people and, um, the work that, um, went into these meetings. And I would like to acknowledge Chris Basta for the work that he did in helping us stay very organized. So thank you, Chris, and our facilitator, um, Dr. Ruth Whitner also, um, was very helpful moving the group through the process. I mean, we, in our four meetings, um, we looked at student achievement data, we looked at attendance data, we looked at, um, discipline data, I mean, we looked at a lot of, um, very rich content to help, um, get to our objectives. And that was the work of, um, of that committee. Anyone have any questions?
I don't have any questions as far as, I think it's a good seven. Probably the questions will come as we start to get more information. But yeah, I just wanna reiterate, thank you to everybody that took place. Heidi, Melanie, thank you very much for representing the school committee on there. Um, I know Julio, Danielle, did you have any questions on it?
No questions.
Felicia, thank you very much. Oh, we, oh, I'm sorry, um, my fault. So if we're all set with that, I would, um, ask if the committee's okay to make a motion to approve the strategic plan as they see fit. Um, is everybody comfortable voting on that tonight? So I'll be looking for a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-nine Abington Public School Department Strategic Plan as presented by Dr. Michellea.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Up next, report of the superintendent of schools, Mr. Schaefer.
So, um, accounting for, um, the required days, both, um, we've gotta, we've gotta have for student days for, for the state, the federal government, but also, you know, in the, also in the teacher's contract. With the weather that we've had to date, um, we can mark June twelfth, which would be a half-day for students, as the last day of school, and cross our fingers that the temperature does not get above eighty-eight, you know, point-five degrees between now and then.
Okay. So, I'm guessing nobody has a question on that, it's pretty self-explanatory on that one. Uh, looking for a motion to set Wednesday, June twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, as the final day for this school year.
I will make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that the earliest we've gone out in a really long time?
The earliest I can remember.
Very early. Very nice.
Similar.
Yeah, no snow days, it's, our calendar's pretty consistent year to year.
Um, and then, the next item I have is consideration for next year's calendar. You've got a copy of it, um, in your packet.
So, Mr. Schaefer and I went over this, and went over the agenda too. It's essentially a carryforward of this year's calendar, um, to next school year. The only difference, I think there may be a couple extra days for holiday break because of the following of Christmas Day.
Putting the, uh, half-day for teachers, no day, no school for students.
On election day.
On the election day.
Okay.
Because it's a, it's a massive election.
Yep. Does anybody have any questions regarding the calendar?
I have a couple.
Okay.
Is there a reason, and I know we're not the only district who does it, but is there a reason that we take off the Friday before Labor Day? Is that contractually agreed upon?
It is not. We've always done that, uh, transi- transition back to school with those reduced weeks, and then you end up in a full week.
I, I think, like, for, for my kids, and they're younger, so this might be different on the older. It's hard to go back to school for two days and then have a four-day weekend, 'cause it's like, getting back into that routine is harder. I don't know from a teacher's perspective, it would feel different. But I personally would love to see us go to school that day and the, that Thursday, Friday, January second and third, when every child is sick because they did things over holiday break or traveled. I'd rather see us off that Thursday, Friday with a two-week-long break and have school on the thirtieth and have school on Good Friday, and still end up the same start and end date. That's just my-
Well, the end date would change one.
If we, if we went to school on Good Friday.
We are going to school on Good Friday. We are going to school on Good Friday.
Oh. Okay, so yes, it would change by the day.
Yeah. In this presen- in this presentation, we are, so.
Which would theoretically put the final day on Monday, the twenty-third.
Yep, which stinks to have a final day on the twenty-third.
Well, that's with, that's with snow days though, too. That's with five snow days, yeah. I mean, we're open to set it however we want, um.
I also know two weeks off with a kindergarten and first grade student is a long time to have a student out of school. But I feel like those first couple days after break and, and maybe attendance data would prove me wrong, but, there's a lot of illness.
I'm just wondering how many people, um, go away
Labor Day weekend.
On Labor Day weekend, so they're, they count on that Friday off? Because it's historically been off? I'm, I mean, I'm open to any potential iteration, but...
I am as well. I mean, obviously, so Peter and I talked about the calendar before we presented. This was the one I, this was where I landed on to as my preference for it. But I think, um, Melanie, maybe like we did before with other days that have been off, and I, maybe that's a discussion to have as we go forward. I don't know, I, I mean, I'm all, if, if the committee's good, if the committee wanted to change that, I think we could. I just don't know if it may be easier to do some as we talk about it, like get it out there, that it's a thought process, and then maybe becomes a thing on a going-forward basis after the fact. 'Cause then the next year, what, it probably would be no school that Friday, right? 'Cause Christmas would be a Thurs- New Year's would be a Thursday. I'd imagine we would not go back for one day the year after that, so maybe that becomes part of it as well.
It's just the way that-
It used to be three days. It used to be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah.
And then the Tuesday became the, uh, the professional day for staff, is what happened. That's con- that's contractually written in, right, the Tuesday, I believe?
It, it is, and it isn't. It is for now, in the current contract. It's something to talk about in the next contract.
Okay.
Because it was started as a pilot in that contract that has carried over to the current contract.
Yep.
Another reason to wait a year to change it, so you could make it a part of that conversation. So, when I say it is and isn't, it, it is in this current contract, but it's written in this current contract as a pilot.
Right.
We've completed the pilot. If that makes any sense.
See, personally, I kinda like the, I always thought of it as the soft opening.
I was kinda there too, but I can see both sides.
For two days, you kinda get your agendas, you know, like you get the feel for rules and things like that, and then the following week, you just kinda start for real. But, I mean, if anyone has any thoughts on it, I'm happy to hear. I would love to have seen, um, you know, the full two weeks in December myself, but looking at this, you know, if we're now, that would put us at December, I mean, sorry, wow, June twenty-fourth. That's before the snow days, but just, we never know what could potentially happen in a winter too, so. I kinda like the way this one fell.
The number of times my phone rings when the temperature hits ninety-five degrees is a lot.
Right.
Which I feel like in August is a lot, too. I feel like those temperatures in August are brutal.
Last year's have been really tough.
They've been brutal, and I know teachers were asking if we could go to half-days like area schools were. And the area schools that flipped to half-days, a lot of them have longer learning days, so their time on learning was such that they had the luxury of being able to call half-days when we wouldn't be able to, because then we would be lacking time on learning. So, I would tend to err on the side of getting out earlier.
I do think it's worth a discussion on Good Friday being a school day too. Especially because it lands a week before, I mean, the day before April vacation. I personally believe that if we have one religious holiday, we should include all of religious holidays. And looking at getting out on the twenty-third, if we added all religious holidays, we'd be getting out very late.
Right.
It's more for me about the educational opportunities for the students. And on Good Friday, with attendance, the educational opportunities weren't the same as, for example, it would be, you know, uh, in September. I just think it's worth the discussion.
And we can def- so, I mean, there's multiple options. We don't have to vote on the calendar tonight. I would say we'd probably have to vote on it by the next meeting.
Yeah.
Where I come down on Good Friday, and I'll say this out loud, is that my hope is that the staff does not curtail back on what should be done on that day. It's a day of school, teach like you would, and if you don't show up, you don't show up, and you have to make that up. I understand people aren't coming in. From the numbers that the superintendent shared with us, the high school is much more religious than Beaverbrook. So, it's clear that what's, everybody knows what's going on with that day to begin with. It's not, I mean, ninety percent of it is not about observing the day. Facebook posts the day before Good Friday. I know AMS has school tomorrow, but my daughter told me they could miss school if a letter is sent because it is a religious holiday. Does anyone know if this is true and excused? So, this is, and the discussions were crazy after that, so I just took the original post, but this committee made a decision to have school on Good Friday, um, as part of a, a better day on learning than it is a day in June. That was the original objective of it. People, students are gonna do, parents are gonna do whatever it is that they do. I know that there are no services that take place until four o'clock in Abington. Every school is closed by four o'clock in Abington. So it does not prevent anybody from doing that. It almost defeats the purpose of taking it as a religious holiday and, and home, I don't wanna say defaming, 'cause that's not the word I'm looking for, but a slap in the face to those that do, um, take the time. We've had somebody come here and speak to us a bunch of times about it, and it's clear that, that, like, they feel that way, but this, it's not what's being done currently by people, and I wish it was. So, where I come from, we didn't have no school the Friday before April vacation this year. So, I'm inclined to have it every year, um, that way. And I get, I get exactly where you're coming from, Melanie, like I know what you mean about the opportunity on learning. My hope, and I talked to the superintendent about this, is that it gets pushed down that that day, I don't want to have the staff asking, "Are you coming in tomorrow?" 'Cause you wouldn't ask any other Thursday if you're coming in tomorrow. Um, it just becomes part of a day that's done, that's taught to the students. That's kinda where I come down on it. I'm on a soapbox a little bit right now because it's the opportunity to, the calendar's there. So I just wanted, there's certain things I wanted to say about that. And I think that's the biggest one, that if we just start to treat it like it is a regular day of learning, and I ask, Dr. Michelle, I ask you next year to push that down. Um, and I think it can start to become more ingrained as a regular day. My hope is that the eighty-one percent of Beaverbrook kids that were there, those kids get used to being in school on that day. I know most of it's because we didn't have school that time our whole lives. I'm, this committee's done a lot of things that have changed things that, we haven't just done things because that's the way it's always been done. We've tried to change this up, and this is one of them. So, I do get the idea of not having it, um, the day before because it can run counterintuitive to the whole aspect of a day on learning. That's just kinda where I come down on, um, the calendar. I'm willing, if, if the committee wants to wait to vote on a calendar, we can. I would just ask them to let, um, me know on some different thoughts of the superintendent, and I can come up with some different ide- different ideas to present. Or we vote on a calendar tonight, or whatever the committee likes to do. Sorry.
I don't feel strongly enough that I don't wanna vote on the calendar. I just wanna throw the ideas out there, and I'm not saying that next year I won't wanna, you know, and m- my fault, I should've had the dialogue earlier.
No, no, that's okay, no, no, don't, please, no, no, not, not a fault at all. I just, I, the idea of the thirty, like, the idea of August thirtieth, like, to me, that's something, that's along the same lines, so maybe that's something we need to, certain thing about. Or, if nothing else, maybe we renegotiate a contract going back to, we start the Tuesday, and then we go three days at least.
Yeah.
So it's three days on to start.
Cause that feels like a habit.
I do too.
I'd never thought of it until you brought it up.
Yeah, I do too, so, um, I defer to anybody else, if they would like to make a motion to vote on this calendar as presented or a different version, um, please feel free.
Can I just ask, uh, or I guess reiterate my understanding of something as well? 'Cause when, um, I talked to the superintendent when I was first running for school committee, I talked about, um, the half-days, and I got an understanding about why our half-days are not every Wednesday, to help with services, and I think that that's worthwhile information for the public to understand that there's a reason that our half-days fluctuate. And as a working parent, it's an administrative nightmare to find coverage, and I fully acknowledge that. But there is a significant, um, learning reason and teaching reason to why that's done. And I just think that that's worth mentioning, 'cause it doesn't, there's thought behind it.
Yeah, that's a great mention, yeah.
And James will correct me if I get this wrong. Um, we have different children that receive different services at different times and different days of the week, depending on their needs. And if you have a consistent half-day, like every Friday's a half-day, or all your Fridays are half-days, then those children are missing, consistently missing, missing those services. Similar to the good argument around having a rotating schedule. How'd I do, James?
Yeah, but the same ones can't-
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we struggle with getting all the PE classes into five full days as it is. It's not like we could only use four and a half for specials.
No, that's great information, 'cause yeah, people always question that. 'Cause I know there are some districts that do do it the same time all the time.
Quincy has. And I appreciate the rotating one because as someone who works, when we always have evening things on a certain night, that's a lot of nights that I have to take off of work because it's always the same night, so that makes it harder. So, I think any which way, things can be difficult. It's hard, but...
There isn't gonna be one calendar? There isn't going to be one calendar or schedule that 2,150 kids and all of their parents like.
2,150.
Today.
Yeah.
Or yesterday, whenever.
Yep.
Can I just get clarification, too? The two teacher days that start the school year.
Yep.
I appreciate having two days to get ready, but I wouldn't want to speak for the Abington teachers. It used to be that one of, that Monday, instead of doing it on the front end of the school year, they had to come in a day at the end of the year. So their school year was one day later.
Not that day, that half-day that they came in became the November day that we're taking. And then that full day was somewhere else in the school year. If that makes sense. The one at the end that you're talking about, when the teachers came back, is the half-day for teachers and no, no school for students day.
That we do on the last day of school now because the last day's a half-day.
So we've always had a full professional development day, but it moved through the year.
Yep.
On different days. And then it was actually when we were moving in here, we said, let's front-end the professional development, and we moved it to that Tuesday.
Microsoft.
And then, yeah, training on technology especially. And then it felt like we did it as a pilot. And so the moving half, the moving full day moved to that Tuesday as a pilot. And then the half-day at the end of the year, after students finish, moved, we moved into a half-PD day that we're doing next year on Election Day with no students.
And when we ran that pilot, that half-day at the end for, you know, was moved with the other day.
So I'm just wondering, again, I like the two days at the beginning. If someone was mentioning, if it ever in the future went back to just the one, that one day at the beginning would go somewhere else. Which would push the school year.
A day.
A day.
Nope.
You're right.
Oh, teacher, student days. Yep, you're right.
Yeah.
Yep. You're right.
I just wanted to make sure. So that, that day on the front end would become a day at some point that pushes the last day.
Because it would be in the middle of the 180 days. Right now, it's prior to the 180 days.
And in terms of productive time with people preparing for incoming students and professional development and trying to front-load things so you can put things into practice as you're beginning a year, I have found that that to be more productive than having it later in the year, in my opinion.
It's always tough to go back, but the two days are great to get ready.
Is there a way we can find out from the teachers?
What they prefer?
Yeah.
I mean, they put in their contract for that one. They want it piloted, so I'm guessing that's where they want it in the beginning, yeah.
Okay. Well, if we hear otherwise.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar as presented in the packet, and anybody can feel free to go off of that however they want.
I can second that.
Okay, so motion to approve the calendar as presented in the packet. I'm going to go in favor. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So one more for you, right?
Oh, yeah. Don't want to leave this one short again. So the next item is really administria.
Nobody can talk tonight.
Because you've already approved the adding of Brockton and Whitman Hansen to the Reed's collaborative. I already showed you the language that changes the collaborative's agreement, but in that process, I never asked you to vote on the language at the collaborative. So you already approved in a separate motion, which we had to do, the inclusion of those two districts as part of Reed's collaborative. We already talked about this change in the collaborative agreement, which has to happen in order to have those districts join the collaborative. Just never asked you to vote the language change in the Reed's agreement. And so the only language change from the previous collaborative agreement are the addition of those schools in the document. And then on page eight of 18, you'll see there's language around how tuition credits are meant to reflect the budget allocations consistent with a, with a state statute, which is already being followed. So there is no, there isn't much to discuss. Because even if you didn't want to do this, three quarters of the other districts have already approved it. So that's why this is administria.
Okay.
But I apologize, I didn't get it to you before.
That's all right. Does anybody have any questions?
Record keeping.
Looking for a motion to approve the Reed's collaborative agreement as presented by Mr. Schaefer.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So establishment of next school meeting date, Tuesday, May 28th, 2024, 7:00 PM here in the high school library. Dates, remember, tomorrow, is that tomorrow? Tomorrow, Wednesday, April 24th, Greenway Boosters meeting in the cafeteria. Saturday, April 27th, is the town elections from 8:00 to 6:00 at Beaverbrook Elementary School in the first gym. So before we, before we adjourn, I just wanted to acknowledge, it's Jake Spillane's last meeting tonight. First, congratulations on your lacrosse win.
Thank you.
So thanks for, thank you for volunteering your time this year to be part of the school committee. Best of luck on your postgraduate plans, whatever they may be. And I just don't know if you wanted to share anything with anybody or anything you wanted to say. Just give you a minute, whatever time you want.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I just, I plan on attending college at Norwich, so.
Okay. Congratulations.
Post-college plans.
Congratulations. Good luck the rest of the season, too.
Thank you.
Also, tonight is Julie Groom's last meeting as a school committee member. So Julie, I just wanted, I wrote some stuff down, okay? So just thank you for the last three years for volunteering your time on the committee. It's obviously been one of the most difficult three-year terms, three-year timeframes, all the non-school items, beginning with the pandemic. Your perspective on all the topics helped us get through the end of that pandemic is when you started, as well, and especially with its associated fallout that happened afterwards. I want to thank you, most importantly, for always exhibiting professionalism, even through the most difficult times as part of the committee. And I just don't know if you wanted to share anything with anybody before you left as well.
Yeah, you know, thank you. Obviously, I had no idea when I decided to run. When I decided to run, we were done. The pandemic was over, and no one was going to be wearing masks anymore. And then, you know, we were right back to the thick of it. Obviously, I don't need to go into detail. It was, there were some difficult times. I very much appreciate, especially this iteration of the committee, everyone's support, people who supported me loudly, people who supported me quietly. It was nice to know that there were people out there who supported me. But no, I'm glad, you know, I'm glad I had the opportunity. You know, obviously, my youngest is about to graduate, so it's been 15 years in the Abington school system. It's been good. It's been great for all of them. And I'm happy that, you know, at least have three years to at least donate some of my time back as a thank you. So yeah, I wish the committee well. I'm not going to lie. I'm definitely going to be opting out of constant contact and all the school notifications, but I'll still, you know, see everything on Facebook and, you know, look forward to the district moving forward. But thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you to both. Good luck with both, to both of you with the future stuff. So I'll see plenty of you. So I would like to give you the opportunity to make the motion to adjourn tonight.
I will make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second. I'll second, I guess. Is that how that came out? All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Yay, Julie.